Welcome to the City of New Franklin Council Meeting Wednesday, February 15. We have one, two, three, four, five first readings and one second reading. Our first reading is Resolution Number 23R-07. Mr. Cox.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
I'm calling the order. The Streets and Streets Committee at 6:05. I'm one of the clerks present. We have two pieces of legislation this evening. One's going to be... Oh, I guess I didn't get that. All right, Mr. Cox, all right, so I only have one. That's Resolution Number 23-R-07, Resolution declaring a need for the Cleveland Madison Road Phase Two Reservicing Project and Authorization, authorizing New Franklin to advertise for sealed bids and declaring emergency. And this is just going to be, we're going to go off the biz. This will be the second phase of that project on Cleveland Madison Road. Any questions?
Mayor, is this the portion of the, is this the ODOT project?
Yeah, it's all ODOT.
So this is probably through ODOT.
Yeah, then through AINC. And their bid package is ready to go, so.
They'll take care of all that.
Yes, through GPD and Solomon Minister through ODOT as well.
Any other questions? I'll be asking to what are your few readings on that and get this out to bid. All right, anything else or Streets and Streets? All right, I'll be closing at 6:06. Thank you.
And our next resolution is Resolution Number 23R-08. Mr. Daniels.
Yep, Community Development at 6:06. These are both resolutions having to do with accepting money from others. 23R-08, Resolution declaring the need for the construction of a seawall, walking path at the New Franklin Tudor House shoreline and authorizing New Franklin to advertise for sealed bids and declaring emergency. This is to do with a grant from the state.
Yes.
Do you want to elaborate a little bit?
Yeah, it's capital grant money, $300,000 to construct a seawall and a walking path. That's the primary components of it. There's also some electrical that's going to be a component where we're giving the above-ground electrical underground, probably some lighting as well, probably some docks, courtesy docks. But those will basically all be probably straight purchases. This is the big piece of it, and it's going to be over $50,000, so we're going to need bids for it. But it's all going to be, it's state money that comes through, it'll be administered exclusively through the city, and this is the first step. Even though we were granted the $300,000, there's a procedure that follows where you have to submit your plans, your proposed budget, and then you get the final approval. And it's somewhat perfunctory, but we've been in communication with them day to day, and I got the communication from their offices this, today, that they anticipated they'd send out the signed agreements here any day now. So if we can get this piece in place, and we're meeting with GPD on Friday to put the bid package, well, to give them the confidence they need to put the bid package together so we can get it out to bid, and it's still conceivable that this could be in place to open season, so we're hoping.
Do we have any questions? I think we do, you know, this is receiving money, so I don't think there's any issue with waving the three on them. All right, moving on, Resolution 23R-09, A Resolution Authorizing New Franklin to Take All Actions Necessary to Accept Northeast Ohio Public Energy Council NOPE Act 2023, Energize Community Grants and Declaring Emergency. Again, we have passed this law to receive money from others.
Exactly, and it's an annual thing, annual process that we follow.
What's the dollar amount of that?
I've got it back. It's in the range of about $12,000. And we will use it, we've used it in the past for various lighting projects, so we'll likely do the same again this year.
Does this keep anything other than that? I apologize.
No, go ahead.
Does this keep anything other, because I normally do certain things here, like the drop-off and things. Is that a different brand?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Thank you. This would be more like the lighting.
Right.
Any issue with waving the three on this? All right, any other questions for Community Development or non-closest community development at 6:09?
Resolution Number 23R-10. Mr. Powell.
This is a resolution to start with, we're going to open up the Public Utilities Committee meeting at 6:10. This is Resolution Authorizing the Mayor to Enter into an Agreement with Summit Soil and Water Conservation District for Provision of Technical Watershed Assistance and declaring that this resolution shall be effective in due course of passage. This is basically your standard services, it's going to make spec outfalls, we can use some plans for soil, soil and stormwater type appearance. I noticed that the contract was dated from January 1st. Can we get that amended? I mean, I know if you ask, we'll make the adjustment to reflect the current date.
I'm not sure there's a need. I'd have to see if they, I don't know that they performed any specific services up to this point. We certainly can prove it, make it retroactive. I mean, it can, you know, we can approve the contract on the face of it, then it would be retroactive to that date. They were just late getting it to us this year.
I don't know, like, I think Brian Funky is the guy that we deal with up there, and they did the same thing to us, and we asked them to amend it, and they actually changed the date. So then what that does is that gets you into the next year, and when they get it, it just cycles without an lapse.
Yeah, I can inquire.
If we could just ask about it.
So you, so, okay, all right.
I'm going to find an improvement, but if they could just amend the date.
Okay. It could help us the year from now.
Yeah, it just.
Right, well, I don't want to take advantage of me there, you know what I'm saying? Because we got the STEMIs, we got the service, but we didn't pay for that.
Well, let's see if they're performing services, and if they haven't.
Fair enough.
And that's just 45 days into the year that essentially is already behind us.
Okay, I'll talk to me.
Everybody comfortable waving the three on this? Close the Utilities Committee meeting at 6:11.
Resolution Number 23R-11. Mr. Cox.
Thank you. We will open a Finance Committee meeting at 6:11, and we will start out with resolution. 23R-11. Yeah, I'm not seeing that.
It's coming, it's coming.
Why not?
Wait for it.
23R-11, Resolution Authorizing New Franklin to Enter into Agreement with the Gladhill Road Machinery Company for the Purchase of a 20, 23-inch and a nine-foot Husky Mountain Snowplow for the Service Department declaring that this should be an emergency. And this is just to upgrade a snowplow that we got with a new truck, and we just need a, you know, something a little more.
Then we got, we're getting a refund on the plow that it came with. So that cost will be reduced, and then this will be a separate expense, and I think there's a sense of, we don't want it to spend less.
Mrs. Hunter, you actually use it on the streets?
Yeah, it's one of the big trucks.
Right. It's just 550?
Yeah, 550.
So it's 5, yeah, they don't use it on the streets, and it's going back to everybody.
It's what we've been using on our other trucks, and I had good luck with them, so.
So two things, I'm sorry to get this to you late. It was drawn, but it just didn't, it didn't leave port, and we didn't get it to Kelly in time, so that's why you got it late. And we really had no way to know if we're going to need this until the truck came in with the plow that was on it, and the plow really just wasn't what we would have liked it to be from a quality standpoint, as far as what our uses are. So we wouldn't like to get this passed today if we can to get this in, although it's 70 degrees, so I don't know if I'm going to be able to get any more snow.
There you go.
There you go.
It's supposed to snow tomorrow, right?
So if you're positive, you'd like to get this done.
Okay, so this is for a total of $13,053.46, and as the mayor mentioned, we'll be returning the current plow that's on there, and that will lower this, or, you know, make it a little less. So we're going to make it brief and move forward on this?
I guess it was about a $6,000 grant for the.
Right.
All right, and then move on to the second reading. All right, Resolution 23R-05, A Resolution to Add Two Full-Time Police Officers to the New Franklin Police Department Declaring Emergency. And this is a second reading on this. At our last meeting, we went through it very thoroughly to pick up this here, answered our questions for us. Do we have any other questions? Mr. Daniels, do you have any further questions?
No, I appreciate you having the second reading. I wasn't here. I think it also gives an opportunity for the public, which the public so desire, you know, that's all.
I didn't have no emails, no calls, nothing.
Public, do you have any comments? Any concerns?
All right, we're in committee, so if you do want to say something, you're welcome.
All right, so then we will ask you to wave the third reading on this. All right, and we will close Finance Committee meeting at 6:14.
Can we get any other questions? And I'd like to call the order the February 15th, Wednesday night meeting at 6:16. Everybody stand with pledge. I pledge allegiance to my father, the United States of America, the republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in heart. Mr. Cox?
President.
Mr. Hargit?
Mr. Jones?
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Fetterman?
Here.
Mr. Powell?
Here.
Mr. Daniels?
Here.
Mr. Scott?
Here.
I'd like to approve the minutes from the February 1st meeting. I have a first, I have a second. Kelly? Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Upstein.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the financials for January 7th to August.
Certainly.
I have a first and a second, Kelly? Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Do we have any public comment? Does anyone have any question, anything they'd like to discuss?
Question. Yes, Neil? The question on when you guys are doing the walkway for the Tudor House, you said you're going to be adding lighting. Do you know how lighting that, like, is it going to be like street lighting for the pathway walk, or?
Could you give us your name?
Yes, I need your name. Oh, I'm sorry, Green Dipple. I'm sorry, Green? Dipple. Could you spell your last name? D-I-P-P-E-L. And your address? 423 Yager Road. Thank you.
And I think the conduit is in there, in the event there's, in the event they decide to put just some lighting along the path, just for.
Okay, just like.
Yeah, exactly.
More like dock lighting.
Okay.
Or on the path, so you, yeah.
Is it the power channel?
Not light poles and overhead lighting.
Okay, and then the other question on the Northeast Ohio money, you said it's for lighting also. Is that for street lighting, then?
It could be used for a variety of, yeah, primarily lighting projects wherever we decide. I think we've used it for a variety of things. We've used it sometimes, and we did some Tudor House with it. I think we did the light down at Center and Main Street. I can't remember if we did Grum Park like that with that.
Yes.
So we really, you know, we put our heads together and talked to different partners to see whether there's a need.
When you guys are doing that, are you doing like a study on the, like, light pollution that it's going to create when you add extra lighting into these places?
I would say, I mean, NOPEC's extremely sensitive to that. I think most of what we've done, we've done LED, so I would say that's a fair, I think that's, it's fair to say that we do that in every circumstance.
Okay, yeah, because all my concerns was on the observatory in the State Park, making sure that we're not adding more light pollution so that we're then interfering with their need to.
You know, that's, I'm glad you brought that up. That observatory in the State Park is a secret, secret hidden gem that we have in New Franklin, where, you know, it's a dark sky, it's not a dark sky, I think it's still dark, and during their events, you can go out and you can, you can see what's going on, and telescopes and stuff, it's just a fantastic thing, and we need to try to promote that more.
Yeah.
I'm glad you brought it up.
Maybe even a picture on the work page?
Maybe we have a meeting there. I'll start at like 8:00.
I'd like to, I'd like to say a little something about the lighting. That concern overall has finally come to light, excuse me, in our community and around the country, you know, and with where we're at, out in rural slash suburban we are, we're in one of those spots where, you know, you can still take advantage of that, and having the lake right there, you know, there's the light poles and lakes, so. I was here for the meeting talking about the school ball fields, and they were talking about the lights. The lights that are at the track now were, I'm pretty sure they were donated, and I think even the neighbor who put them up was donated, and there were some leftover poles. The poles aren't tall enough, so the lights end up pointing more out than down. The new lights they're talking about are, I believe, 80 feet tall, which sounds terrible, but it can be focused more from above, have a better wash of light that ends up where it belongs, instead of a big spotlight here that blasts out. So interesting topic, and it's something that I think anytime any lighting is done, it crosses people's minds now, and it probably didn't 10 years ago.
Right, yeah.
A lot of things about the lighting they're developing now, the LEDs, they go to what they call bug standard, and bug is backlighting, uplighting, and glare. And the LEDs really don't have a lot of glare. They have glare when you're looking at them, but they don't reflect as much off the pavement. And then there's also a cutoff, where the old high-pressure sodium, the little halide-type lights, those like, the light will travel a lot further than the LED. That's why, you know, for years you didn't see them in the states and stuff, because they couldn't get the projection out of them. So anything you're going to buy today is going to be built to those bug standards.
Well, the other concern too would be wildlife too, that we don't want to keep continuing chasing a wild, you know, it's nice to see the deer, and they're back here. I don't know if it affects the deer or not, but you know what I mean?
But they come into my neighborhood. Going along with it.
They do a lot of the acacia rhythm, sleeping patterns, so I know they do a lot of engineering for lights for that as well.
Okay, I just want to make sure we're considering all those factors too.
Robin?
Thank you. You can go with Mark.
Hi, Mark Sedlin, Brook Road. I wanted to say I appreciate you having this zoning workshop, it's an open forum, a lot of the public to be here. Couple of things that I just might ask is that it came up that we're talking about a new code or reorganizing the reworded and the existing as a base to work forward from, that any of that rewording or reorganizing still would be subject to Section 300-08, which is the amendment to the zoning code and zoning map that includes public hearings. So we have the opportunity to give our input on how it's being reworded or reorganized. Secondly, I think it's a great idea to come up with a subdivision code as part of the comprehensive planning process and doing the survey and talking to people and hearing them at the public workshops. The idea of having subdivisions, having some requirements on them that take into accommodation the existing environment, green spaces, open spaces, wetlands, et cetera, that goes a little bit beyond what typical subdivision planning does, might be a good idea, and a lot of people mentioned that or brought up that idea, that back in 2004, the comprehensive planning included some allusions to that kind of planning that would require a developer when they come in to take into consideration the contours of the land and overgrowth of trees and kind of blending it into the environment and making it less a come-in, bulldoze everything down, put it in sewers like they're doing over in Norton. So it might be an opportunity, if we're going to look at that subdivision code, to incorporate some of that in the front end to kind of tell developers the kind of development we'd like to see.
I think you're right, Mark, and I think that was the impression I got from the gentleman tonight. That really is what he's talking about, in my opinion. Not changing everything, but giving us thoughts that we didn't know. We didn't really realize some of those things until we see states such as Norton bulldozing everything down, and we realized we don't want to do that. So I think that's a good idea.
Robin?
Robin Akey, 1215 Center Road. I have a couple topics, and so I hope council will indulge me in case I go over four minutes.
We'd love to.
All right. First thing I wanted to bring up was the East Palestine train derailment and subsequent disaster with the chemical spill. And some of those chemicals, I don't know if anybody's been researching that, but really nasty, nasty chemicals that carcinogens, highly combustible, can cause anywhere from eye and throat, lung irritation, all the way through hospitalization and other nasty things. One of the items was the vinyl chloride that got leaked, and when it got burned, it created hydrogen chloride. And that hydrogen chloride is basically acid rain. It gets sucked up into the air, into the vapors, and it just kind of hangs around up in the atmosphere. So whenever it rains, now, or tomorrow, or snows, or whatever, that'll be coming down. The other thing it created was phosphine, and I'm hoping I'm pronouncing that correctly, and that was a chemical used in World War I, and it killed over 140,000 soldiers. So I just want to make sure that there's some serious concerns. The Wisconsin Department of Health Services has said that any exposure to just vinyl chloride and the subsequent other chemicals that produce can affect one's liver, lungs, spleen, nervous system, and blood. And that human and animal studies show high rates of cancer. So you can research this on the CDC and the NIH, and there's a lot of informative information on that and describing the symptoms, the effects, and treatments, and all that kind of stuff. I know a lot of questions have been risen as to what and how it was handled. I'm not questioning that, I'm just trying to think forward. East Palestine is 55 miles from New Franklin, and the problem, the concern I have is that it's sitting in our air, in our water, which has been confirmed by both the federal and the Ohio EPA, and it can eventually get into the soils. So I raised concerns via email with the mayor, and he forwarded it on to the fire chief, and the fire chief responded that we're basically waiting to see if the state or the federal tell us if there's an issue. And I'm concerned about waiting on that, because the state is pretty much busy now with trying to figure out what to do with that, as well as the feds. And I'm not sure we really want to wait for some entity to come in and say we have a problem, because it's been two weeks now, or this Friday, it'll be two weeks since that spillage. And all over the radios, newscasts, social media, whatever you look at, there are residents who live in East Palestine as well as in other areas that are reporting issues. And some of those issues are acid rain on the cars, which happened in Canton, which is 20 miles away from New Franklin. There are also reports today, I saw that there were a couple horses, age 3 and 20, that just suddenly dropped over. I'm not saying it's related, but it's an occurrence, and that occurred in East Florida, which is 30 miles away. If you were to go search online for the Pittsburgh or the Wheeling news stations, they have a lot more, a lot more activity on their websites as to what has happened. So I'm just really concerned about waiting, because we have the polar bear jump happening this weekend. We have all of the Poise Lakes and Tuscaloosa River and that, and in two months, because I'm pretty much thinking we're in March, in two months, boats are going to be going into the lakes. And in three months, people are going to be swimming in the Poise Lakes. So I would like to see a more proactive approach from the city, and that we can start testing our waters and air now, and that would help give us a baseline as to like where we're at, and then maybe have a frequent occurrence of that testing, like maybe on a weekly basis. At least, I would say a minimum for right now for weekly, since in two weeks, we're seeing effects in Canton, and I would just like strongly request that we do that. So that's the first topic, and bear with me. The second one is the January 18th council meeting. I was finally able to watch the video, and it was during the mayor's report, they were talking about the Parks and Rec, getting together with them and setting up different things. I do plan on attending the Parks and Rec's commission, but I've already made a commitment with the high school for next Tuesday, which is their next meeting, so. But just as a refresher, the January 18th meeting, it was discussed that a new pavilion was basically being looked at putting in at Sisler Field, and it was a 24-by-40-foot pavilion, and that the prior years, I don't know when it occurred, but there had been a study, and costs associated, it was $2.7 million to put in a pavilion and concession stands and a restroom. Like I said, I don't know when that estimate was done, but the mayor had stated that it wasn't a funding issue, it was, what was really requested was a pavilion. And I was surprised by that, because my niece plays a lot of softball, and I have coached teams at Sisler, and I was just, it's always been the chatter of a pavilion, concessions, and facility. So I contacted five coaches who currently coach at Sisler, both baseball and softball. Some of those coaches run tournaments at Sisler Field, and I asked them if they had changed their idea from when I had coached, and they basically said, no, they want a pavilion and concessions and restrooms, because they have three fields there. And when you're running a tournament, there's a lot of activity. And I'm not sure if all of you are familiar with what happens at a softball tournament, which I can speak at, is that you have a team playing on the field, you have two teams, or you have two teams on the field, you have two teams that just came off the field, and then you have two teams waiting to go and play the next game. So you're talking anywhere, you're talking about if you have 15 people on a team, you now have 60 people in a 24-by-40 plan pavilion. So I know the coaches had asked for what we, what is currently at Jet Park. And Jet Park was part of the Akron and Springfield Township jet agreement, and their bid that they had and what took place was to construct three softball fields, one baseball field, one soccer field, and put in a pavilion, concessions, and restrooms. And that project was completed for a total cost of $2.07 million. But that's all of it. They had to graze the land, they had to put in the drainage event, so.
What year, Robin, was that completed?
I'm sorry?
What year was that completed?
2003.
Thank you.
So it was 20 years ago. It's, we already have the fielding, and we have the drainage there, and so it's like, seems like there's an opportunity, a fantastic opportunity to be there. Just one more point on the jet, is they host numerous softball and baseball tournaments currently, and they bring in national tournaments. So there, if you have the facility, they will come. There's that adage out of the movie, if you build it, they will come. So the thing I wanted to mention is right now, there's porta-pots at the Sisler Field. And I don't know if any of you have experienced this, but I did. I was using the facility, porta-pot, and a football came and hit. That has got to be one of the scariest things when you're in a.
Scariest second there.
Delicate position. I'm just saying, y'all get that picture. So I still have, you know, moments from now. We don't need to know the details. Please do not print that in the newspaper. I'm just letting you know. I'm just thinking, do we want grandparents who come to the, you know, games, just maybe a nightly game, a weekly game, or a tournament, sitting in a porta-pot, or those that might be physically challenged? Do we want to really have them in a porta-pot? We've just put in these beautiful courts at the Sisler Park, and beautiful tennis courts, pickleball courts. I've sent pictures to my friends and family, and they're saying, that is the Taj Mahal of courts. I mean, it is beautiful. And then it's just, now we're thinking of a $50,000 pavilion. I would like to, like, ask that the city and council be open to more discussions as to what we could put at Sisler Park. I mean, if you look at what's being done at Jet, we can create opportunities here, economic opportunities. You hold a tournament, our business is along Manchester Road for food, gasoline, sodas, whatever, they could get some of that, that business. And also concessions will allow teams to have fundraising events, if you have concessions there. You could make it where a league runs their concessions for summer, for a tournament, so it gives them an ability. And I think because it's named for George Sisler, you know, he's really a Hall of Fame, Baseball Hall of Fame individual. If you read his statistics, it's amazing what he did. If you read his statistics, it's amazing what he did in the 1920s, before you had all of the performance enhancing drugs and plush contracts and all that kind of stuff. And I think we could turn that into a really first-class facility if we put in a pavilion and concessions and indoor plumbing. And then that can all be tied in with what we currently have at the park, the baseball fields and the courts. So thank you for allowing me to have extra minutes and talk.
We enjoyed listening to you.
Thank you.
If I could touch on a couple things for Robin real quick? You had some concerns about the East Palestine issues with the water and everything. I have been in contact with EPA on another community's water system. This group had inquiries as well. The, there's an aquifer basically that runs from northern Ohio, it runs all the way down to Canton, it feeds the Canton Southern Water Plant. Hudson, Toga Falls, Canton, they all feed off of that water.
The same one, Kevin?
Pardon?
The same one?
Yeah, there's, there's a channel, because if you basically had a glacier fill years back, they filled in these valleys with all the gravel and glacial terrain and everything. This little forest, and that's where the water that we draw from comes, it comes out of. Basically, that water has a southern flow, so any of the water that we're typically getting from here comes from the northern part and flows south. So there's a plus there. So we're not necessarily getting water technically flowing up, you know, what the EPA is saying, coming up from the Palestinian area. But they also gave me a number for people who have concerns, because they don't want you calling just at the standard regional office, which would, like, the guy you go up is there wanting. But they don't have, they don't have the information that you're probably looking for. So they gave me a public interest group for the EPA, and I've got that number if you'd like it. That number is 614-644-2160. Then he also gave me a number for this C, yeah, the CTEH toxicologist. That number is 234-542-6474. And we're pushing that number out, out there where I work, and I, you know, you guys feel free to contact him as well. Those are the people that the EPA is forwarding people with questions and concerns to, because they've got the answers.
Did you keep this number to yourself, Kevin?
Yeah, the Ohio EPA Public Interest Group is 614-644-2160. And then the toxicologist number is 234-542-6474.
And Mayor, I think you could speak to the pavilion.
Yes. Well, yeah, there's been discussions for years and years about trying to get a pavilion over there. The overarching question is how do we spend parks money? And do we put it all in one place? Should it all be about baseball and softball? That's really where the, I think the tennis courts and the pickleball courts came from. There's a lot of things we'd like to do at Grill Park as well. They'd like to have a pavilion over there. So it's just a question of, we'd love to have all these things, but whether or not, whether or not it would ever be justified to put the type of pavilion that we looked at previously, which was about $250,000 or so, does it make sense to spend that? Is it fair to spend that money at that facility? That's kind of the overarching question. And the answer, at least in the Parks Commission, has been that, you know, and I, and I think it's consistent, but we've heard from people, is that, you know, we want to be judicious in terms of how we spend parks money. So the, having said that, the notion, I would call it a modest pavilion, it's the same size as what is at Lockhart, which has really served the community really well, and there's four ball fields down there. And the thinking is that we can get this done for something in the range of $60,000. Build it in such a way that, that there'd be room to add on concession in the event that we wanted to in the future. In terms of restrooms, the notion that the parks' thoughts in that regard are that we're probably going to want a permanent restroom out on those grounds, but not necessarily right at the ball fields. If we put a permanent restroom in, it would probably make more sense to move it down more towards the tennis and the pickleball courts, so it can be accessed by those folks there. We've got soccer fields surrounding all of that. And so we think a location for a permanent restroom would make more sense, a little bit more centrally located. As it relates to the porta-pots for baseball, that's what you see. I've had the experience of, well, I did it for 25 years. I coached it. And now I'm tracing my grandson around, all over the state. And I will tell you, all over the state, well, the state tournament, what it did was down in Columbus, a hundred, a couple hundred, 100 teams, porta-pots. That's what you get. So, yeah, at least we have a, we made a conscious decision to put somebody from baseball, softball on that Parks Commission, and we've had that person, Steve Gackano, and Steve communicates with the baseball and softball people all the time. Matter of fact, we're letting them in here for their meeting here on Sunday, and he's on board with this. So, so I think we're, I think we're going in the right direction as far as a pavilion up there. But ultimately, we'll bring that to council, because it will have to be get out, we expect it to be in excess. We're getting pricing on that right now. I just want to speak to the, and Ms. Akey is correct, we did talk with, I refer her question to Chief Leslie, I've had conversations with Chief Leslie. I would say that what Chief Leslie communicated was not that, that when we say we're waiting for something bad to happen, the chief is monitoring the situation, and continues to monitor it, and will continue to monitor it. And this, I'll say, we have, I think, and certainly in Southern County, emergency management, and the Ohio emergency management, and the Ohio EPA, we have some really skilled people, and we have some people who really care. Now, that's not to say mistakes don't happen. But I would want the people in New Franklin to have some comfort from the fact that there are professionals who are trained in emergency management. And we went, I went to a training seminar a year ago, they brought up the staff from, I think Rice University, where so many of these people train. When you hear the presentations, it's not just three guys that come out and say, well, it looks good to me. I mean, these are people that are skilled, that are trained for these types of circumstances. I'm not suggesting you say that, but I want the people in New Franklin to be comfortable knowing that there are, there's some solid professionals that are monitoring this. Our police department, I mean, our fire department, and our fire chief is extremely skilled in these areas, and he's aware of the potential, which right now, it doesn't, there's no indication that it exists in this area. So, but we'll continue to monitor it, and I'll continue to be in touch with the chief in that regard. And I, I would say from, you know, that I wouldn't want anybody to be in fear at this point in time, but it's always, it makes sense to pay attention, and we sure will.
May I ask what the monitoring that is being done by the fire chief, I'm sorry?
Communication with the Ohio AMA and the Ohio EPA. And they are doing plenty of testing, as you're well aware.
I am not questioning what the EPA is doing, or I'm not questioning that. I realize they have their hands extremely full with what has happened on the eastern side of the state, as well as monitoring what is going on downstream. What I'm asking for is that we take an active role in our community, and it, to me, it's beyond monitoring. Because that would entail that an EPA official, whether federal or state, to come in and do testing, or determine that in an area close proximity to us has an issue. I'm just trying to think, we have a lot that goes on in our Porries Lakes area, that to monitor and expect the EPA to tell us, instead of us taking a more active role. You know, we have a lot of residents here that are aged and may already have ailments. I'm not trying to scare anybody, but I think we have, need to have a level of, here we are, we know, if we go out and do testing now, our website can say, hey, we've tested, we have nothing, nothing showing up in that test. That, to me, will give a calming effect to residents. And you say, hey, we're going to do this on a weekly basis, and each time those tests come back negative, or for non-dangerous levels of ailment, it'll continue to give positivity to the residents that everything is good in Franklin. If we wait for the EPA, my concern is, is we start having boating and swimming season, and then we find out, oh, we had an issue. Now our residents have been in a dangerous situation. Our first commitment should be safety forward, not monitoring a report, and not waiting for somebody else to get back to us. I'd like to see some proactive response to this, to stay ahead of the game, instead of waiting until the game is dumped in our backyards or in our lakes.
Would you feel comfortable with calling the chief again tomorrow? I will call him also, and then I'll give you a call with what he said, and I'll suggest that to him.
With what, asking for...
The fire chief, yes.
I did respond to him after he attempted that there was, waiting for the EPA analysis and fence analysis. And my response was, I think waiting for them was too long. I also stated that that's like, if we wait, we're leaving the barn door open and then closing it after the horses leave. We're waiting for something to happen. I have not heard back from the fire chief.
I'm expecting a second email back from Derek, because I had some, we wanted to know what some proactive testing we're going to do up there.
You're going to do testing and housing?
They're looking at when, like, air type...
Well, that's what I think we should do, win and want.
As soon as I hear something back as to what Derek, what they're recommending, I'll forward that on, so.
You forward that on?
You have to get the equipment, right? You have to get the equipment.
Could you forward that to me as well?
Yes.
Thank you.
Derek would be the one to...
Yeah, he's, he gave me some answers back, that's right, on his numbers, but he's going to get that and some others, so.
Okay.
When I get that, I'll just forward it on.
Are you comfortable with that, Robin?
For now, yes.
Thank you for giving me that. Is there anyone else that has anything? Daniel said it's hundreds of people.
So I think you got one in the back.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I have something that's totally different, and I understand what she's talking about, I really do. And I was wondering, does that affect our well water at all?
No. That's where I was getting to the point where the water typically flows from the north to the south. So where you're at, I mean, I'm a few houses away, so I feel pretty confident we're okay.
Right, I thought so. Okay, I have something else.
Name is in your name and address?
Marjorie Brundle, Virgin 63, Estelle Drive. I wonder if you have any kind of orders about barking dogs, dogs that bark all day long? Is there anything on our books about that?
Chief, would that come under noise for the barking dogs?
It could. What you should do is call the police out there. We have a form that we can have them fill out, and we'll have an officer sit out there and listen to the dog, and then we'll forward that to a prosecutor and send out a letter. There's a few steps involved, but it could eventually turn to a point where it could go.
Okay, I can fill out this form and then send it to the prosecutor in, what, Barbican? Not here?
Yeah, we'll do all that, we'll just come out and talk to you about it, what the form they're with. So, yeah, if it's barking, if it's barking for, you know, extended periods of time, call an officer out there.
I have in the past, I have in the past, you know. I just don't want to have to sue these people, because I don't want to, I don't want to start a...
Sure, I understand.
Fight with them, you know what I mean?
Sure. I'll meet with you after we move your address, and I'll list some stuff up, and I'll get with you.
Okay, sounds good.
Anyone else?
Thank you, Chief. It was very important.
Charlie, would you do the first reading for our resolution, number 23-R07?
A resolution declaring the need for the Cleveland Massillon Road Phase 2 Resurfacing Project and authorizing New Franklin to advertise for sealed bids and declaring an emergency.
Yeah, this is, we discussed this during our Streets and Greens Committee, this is just to get it out in a bid. It's a project with ODOT and, what do I want, Paul?
Yeah, yeah.
Eads. So they're taking care of that, and DCD, we take care of the bid. So everything's ready to go, and I would like to make a motion to waive the three readings. Second?
We have a first and a second, Kelly.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cotts?
Yes.
Mr. Harget?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution 23-R07.
Second? Do we have a first and a second, Kelly?
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cotts?
Yes.
Mr. Harget?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0. Resolution number 22R08.
This was given to Community Development, and we would like to move, I would like to move to waive the three readings.
I need to read it first, Jack.
Oh, I'm sorry.
A resolution declaring the need for the construction of a seawall and walking path at the New Franklin Tudor House shoreline, and authorizing New Franklin to advertise for sealed bids and declaring an emergency.
All right, now, this was given to the Community Development Committee, and we would like to move to waive the three readings.
Second? We have a first and a second, Kelly.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cotts?
Yes.
Mr. Harget?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
I move to adopt Resolution 23-R08.
Second.
We have a first and a second, Kelly.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cotts?
Yes.
Mr. Harget?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0. Resolution number 23R09.
A resolution authorizing New Franklin to take all actions necessary to accept Northeast Ohio Public Energy Council 2023 Energize Community Grant and declaring an emergency.
This was presented to Community Development Committee, and I would like to move to waive the three readings.
Second.
We have a first and a second.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cotts?
Yes.
Mr. Harget?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Cotts?
Yes.
Mr. Harget?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0. Resolution number 23R05, Kelly.
Ten.
Well, she can stay on that.
We're just going to stay on the five?
No, she can do that, and then we just jump.
Okay. A resolution to add two full-time police officers to the New Franklin Police Department and declaring an emergency.
This resolution is assigned to Finance Committee. We move to waive the third reading on Resolution 23R05.
Second.
We have a first and a second, Kelly.
Mr. Cotts?
Yes.
Mr. Harget?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cotts?
Yes.
Mr. Harget?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
We move to adopt Resolution 23R05.
Second.
We have a first and a second, Kelly.
Mr. Cotts?
Yes.
Mr. Harget?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cotts?
Yes.
Mr. Harget?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
and declaring that this resolution shall be effective immediately upon passage.
This resolution was here to the Public Utilities Committee. We'll be asking to waive the three, in motion to waive the three.
Second.
We have a first and a second, Kelly.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cotts?
Yes.
Mr. Hargett?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to pass Resolution 23R-10.
Second.
We have a first and a second, Kelly.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cotts?
Yes.
Mr. Hargett?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero. Resolution number 23R-11.
A resolution authorizing New Franklin to enter into an agreement with the Glen Hill Road Machinery Company for the purchase of a 2023 hitch in a nine-foot Husky Mount snowplow for the Service Department and declaring an emergency.
This resolution is assigned to the Finance Committee. We move to waive the three readings on Resolution 23R-11.
Second.
We have a first and a second.
Mr. Cotts?
Yes.
Mr. Hargett?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
We move to adopt Resolution 23R-11.
Second.
We have a first and a second, Kelly.
Mr. Cotts?
Yes.
Mr. Hargett?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero.
We'll follow that time again.
Oh, yes.
Time for our favorite part of the movie.
That's what we love to hear, music to our ears. All right. Let's see, a few things. Data Force, who handled the paper surveys, did issue, they sent us an invoice, and the invoice is $2,383 more than the original contract. And when we approved the contract, we approved it for the dollar amount. So we just got this, so I'll be bringing that resolution to you in two weeks to authorize the payment of the additional funds. We've looked at it, and it appears to have to do with postage and...
Postage, yeah, we add so that it occurs.
Right, right. So we'll bring a resolution for you in two weeks to approve that so we can get them paid. And we'll let them know in the meantime. The check's not yet in the mail, but it's going to be in there. Soric Farms, I think we've talked to some degree about that. There's an individual entity who purchased the Soric Farms lot and has had some discussion about potentially turning that into an event center of sorts. I wanted to let people know that they are beginning to proceed in that fashion and discuss some plans with our zoning department, which ultimately, assuming that they stay on that course, will resolve in the submission of plans for that project, which will require at least a variance. And so we had people that were at a meeting a few, a month or two or three ago, asking about that. What we'll do is, we're determined to add the Soric Farms to the notify me on our website. And we'll let people, if they want to stay abreast of what that project is about, when those plans, as soon as it's public record, we'll publish it. And similar to the questions relative to any revisions to the zoning code, there has to be public hearings, there'd have to be notification to adjacent property owners. I've already talked with Barry, and that in the event that those plans are submitted, we would not only notify the people that were statutorily required, but basically, folks on K-land, which are directly across from that, show their interest. So we've already determined we'll notify everybody on that street as well, and we'll get as much public notice out there. And we'll see what these folks are proposing, and see if it makes sense. So I wanted to keep everybody in the loop on that one. We have had no plans submitted to us relative to the golf course development at this point in time. But again, if you go to our website, you go to notify me, and you want to get notice on anything that's filed, or anything, any discussions or plans or meetings that are going to take place, then you'll be notified either at your email address or by text to you, whatever you prefer, or most. We talked about Republic and their rate increase. I've been trading some calls with their GM. And I went back and looked at a few things in terms of what the history on that was. We, our contract began with them April of 2022. We piggybacked, in a sense, with the contract with Green, although we got a little higher rate because Green's contract had been, it was put together quite some time before ours, and increases had gone up. There was a discussion as we approached the third quarter of 2022, because it just took effect in April of 2022. There is a gas surcharge provision in the contract that permits that if the diesel fuel goes to $4 a gallon for a 90-day period, then there's a trigger in there that will trigger a rate increase. So we had those discussions in June of 2022, and they were suggesting that they were going to put that in place for this third quarter of 2022. We reminded them that, you know, we weren't too happy about the fact that we didn't really get the deal with Green, but, you know, we ended up with a meeting of minds. And the result of that conversation was that they agreed that they would forego that increase in the third quarter of 2022 and wait until the fourth quarter. Well, they didn't impose it in the fourth quarter either, but they imposed it in January where it built. And I did go back and look, we did, I thought we had talked about that, and we did talk about it at, let's see. Yeah, I met with them in late June of 2022. And our council meeting on July 6th, I reported in my notes that the contract for the fuel surcharge, if diesel increased over $4 was going to be implemented, we'd see an 80 cents per month increase for the fourth quarter, and that assumed that you had the full service. But we didn't get it for the fourth quarter. So we got this, if your bill is like mine, it went up about $2.79 for the three years, a little bit over 80 cents for the first quarter. So I'm going to have further discussions with Republic about that because they're actually supposed to send us in advance of that increase, a notice that they intend to invoke that clause in the contract. I don't know yet what the numbers were for the 90 days leading up to January 1st, if diesel was over $4 that stretch or not. What are the charges for diesel?
It's pretty easy to find out. You go to the EIA.gov, Energy Information Association, where there's pads for different parts of the country. I don't think there's state-specific, but we're...
What do you think? Has it been over 40?
Well, it's, well, it's, I don't know.
Well, we don't want to be too far over 40. Because, I mean, I mean, but diesel, you know, we were over $6 for a while. So I'm going to guess that the numbers support the increase, and we'll have to have a conversation with them. You know, it looks like we spared really for six months. So anyway, I'll report back to you once I've covered that on that.
The contract should say what their source for that pricing is. It, I'm pretty confident it's not what it is at the quarter of June. So I have a station, it'll be...
Based on the Department of Energy website, they're on diesel fuel.
EIA.gov, if you need, I'll get to that site, I could get you through.
Okay.
Just want to clarify real quick, that it's a surcharge and not a price increase, and that if fuel were to go back down below $4, that the price would go back to our contracted price.
Exactly.
Correct. And I also want to point out that Mr. Daniels did actually refer to, so I...
I did. Show my age there. And finally, we did, I was presented with a letter by two individuals representing residents of Portage Lakes and neighbors of the Tudor House. The letter was dated the first, but we actually met last Friday, which I think was the 10th. And this was presented to me, and it's relative to concerns that are expressed in this letter. We passed it on to council about, really, two things, noise and safety as it related to events at the Tudor House. So in response, we had a good discussion. As it relates, I'll talk about the safety aspect of it first. There's a question about the traffic in and out from the Tudor House, which traditionally has come through Latham Lane. We are, I will be happy to tell you that I was able to tell these folks that we had just met earlier in the week and had a meeting, and the intention is to eventually, and hopefully sooner rather than later, direct, access and egress through the State Park. So as you know, we've really developed a much stronger relationship with the park. There is signage now on the park road that directs you to the Tudor House. What we're looking to do is get signage out on 93, direct into the Tudor House in that direction. And then as soon as we get that in place, to change the address for the Tudor House to that entry on Manchester Road, so that when people are GPSing, that's where it will go. And then eventually, and as soon as we get some, this going, that, and probably even this summer's events, that we will, well, there would still be, we'd still permit some access through Latham Lane, likely then close that once the event begins so that all the traffic goes out through the State Park and out to Manchester Road. So we're working on that.
Not close Latham Lane, close the exit.
Yeah, yeah, Tudor House, yeah, not the lane, no, no, just the entrance off the, the entrance off the cul-de-sac there to the Tudor House. So we close that, and then all the traffic leaving would go out through the State Park. On the safety aspect, on the noise aspect, we're continuing to work on that. And one of the measures that, again, was already discussed, and I was able to share that, is the intention to erect a, I'll call it a sound fence, for lack of a better term, probably eight foot, got to make sure whether it complies with our zoning, if not, we'll come in and try to get a variance at the, let's see, the southeast corner of the property. And to run it, probably, there's a house there, probably to run it from about the western corner of that house down to the lake, and then also angle it in, have it come in along the lakeside for a short distance. And then, once that's in place, then deposit that also with some trees. I'm not saying that'll be the only answer, but, you know, we'll see. So, you know, the intention is to be sensitive, we don't want anybody to be inconvenienced by all the activity over there, but we're going to do our best to minimize the concerns. That's all I got.
That sounds good, Paul. Can we have a comprehensive plan committee report?
I don't have a whole lot to report, and I apologize for that because I was sick last week and missed the workshop. I don't know if anybody wants to talk on it. Again, if you want to be involved, I sign up for the notify me on the website, and you get clear notifications. Obviously, there's Facebook chat or something like that, too.
We had our second, second public workshop after the survey deal was collected. A good discussion, a lot of discussion about different topics, some differences of opinion, but we're going to get back to the community as diverse as we have. And we had a pretty good turnout for both of them. Actually, a little better turnout for the second one than the first one, so. The more you get the word out, the more people we get there, and the more people's voices will get heard.
Absolutely. And that difference of opinion is key, that's what our system is built on. And we need to have those open discussions, and let people be heard. But as far as I know, it's going well, and we're moving again.
It looked like it was going well. I think we had a good turnout, I really did. We're getting people chatter and getting some good ideas.
The next public workshop is March 9th, 6 o'clock at, at R. Lewis.
Thank you.
March 9th?
Some parks are at, it's the topics are, how parks are at.
Oh, I thought you were, I thought some TV show.
It's, it's March 9th and 6th?
Yes. Thursday evening.
Thank you. And I'm assuming since Susan had to rush out, we don't have a finance report?
That's correct, and there's a medical emergency in the family that Susan had to address.
Do we get anything for old business?
I don't know if the mayor had maybe an update on the comprehensive, or on the qualified ordinances. Have you heard anything from them, as to progress, how they're doing?
No, it's in progress. We're still sending them some materials, scanning and sending them as far as our existing ordinances and resolutions. So we're still sending them data, and they're proceeding at their course. So as far as, you know, to my knowledge, we're still on, we're still on track.
Any other?
I have one real quick to kind of hit on that letter a little bit about the Tudor House, and I really do appreciate you taking the time, and Mr. Cantor has also done the same thing, take the time to talk to residents. I think it's really important. I was intrigued by the fact that letter arrived unsigned. It represents a group, but seemed to be turned in anonymously. Oh, no, no, it was, it was hand-delivered to me. Okay, so it only represents those two people, or? Well, this, I can't, I won't speak for them, and, well, let me express the way it was expressed to me. And it was, well, I'll let them decide, you know, it's, rather than who was there, I took some notes, it's probably appropriate, it was Al Bolis and Jim Burnett, two people that live over there. And what was expressed to me was that they represented, that they spoke for a number of people, not just in the neighborhood there, but also some people around the lakes, on the other side of the lake as well. That there's no indication of how many or who those other folks were.
Nope.
Well, it sounds like you're a little bit of the right, yeah, to rectify it.
We're trying.
Well, I think you're right, Paul, I really do.
Yeah, I think there's a lot of effort going into working with people. And I talked to them about the balance, you know, we got an awful lot of people having an awful lot of fun over there, but we don't want to offend anybody, people, so, so.
David, are you up, Dan?
Yeah, somebody's got a cat in the shed, that's all I can say.
We're looking for a cat person. What are we going to do to it, David, when we find it? Stand the post down?
Take them, that's what it is. Count me earlier, so, somebody here.
Do we have any new business?
Just one thing to mention, I know we talked a little bit about the Tudor House. April 8th is the, one is Easter Ednum, just make sure everyone's aware of that.
And it's the Tudor House?
Yes.
April 8th?
April 8th.
So this is, this is new business I'd like to just have a little discussion about because it's way early, and it's, I think it might be too early to go into any kind of a deep dive because the productivity of it is like, the governor made a comment about East Palestine, which is really close to where I was born. And he talked about not being notified, that the community wasn't notified about the chemicals that were coming through. We have a high-speed train line that comes through our city. And I guess I wouldn't mind seeing us pay attention to how that discussion transpired. You know, we're, the rural, the rural, the ruralers have a lot to say about what they do on their land, and, you know, they've owned that land since 1802, and they make sure you know it when you question anything about it. But I think it would be something to camp on to, pay attention to, that there may be some notification, and maybe our safety services need to be at least aware. Not that we're going to have the resources to be able to react to something that massive, but, you know. I sat at the rural tracks at Vanderhoof the other day. It was the middle of the night, and it's going by, and you hear that click, 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 and you hear one go by every once in a while, and it sounds a little different than all the others, and I put my car in reverse, and that's, and it's a little fresh in memory right now, to be honest with you. So I think it is something that, I think, I think a lot of people in the state and in the country are going to learn a lot from this disaster. I think it's a little early to know that now, but I think there'll be a lot to come from it.
I really do, and I think that's another thing, and this is completely on the other spectrum. But that was, I think, what that gentleman was talking about with the zoning. You probably learned after minutes of the campaign.
We get a lot of learning.
You probably need to be proactive about it, and get your feet on the ground, and get looking about. Reg is looking right.
That's all I have.
Thank you. Anyone else? Does anyone in the public have anything they'd like to add?